I'd like to call the work session for Tuftonboro water assortment. The order is Friday, October 6th. We're here to -- it's a work session to review Conservation Commission and transfer station budgets. Why don't we do Conservation first? Steve Wingate? Come on down. You know everyone here, Steve?
Yep.
Why don't you begin? Welcome to downtown Tuftonboro. And let me just say, having worked on your Conservation Commission, thank you for your leadership. You make a difference.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would start by giving you kind of a rundown of things we've worked on this year. Paid it in. Can I do that?
Please.
Okay. We're a well-established wellwater testing. I'm guessing we've had -- we can't say for sure how many people each time are originally versus people who retest either because it's recommended or because they've taken some kind of measures. But I'm guessing we've processed probably 500 or 600 households, which is a big dent in Tuftonboro. Everybody in the commission has participated in the natural resources section of the master plan. And majority of the members have put in considerable amount of time in areas of their expertise, writing portions of that. We're in various phases of two small easements which are going to happen. They're small, but they're significant. And we're negotiating with two landowners at the moment for two larger donated easements, potential donated easements. We're working on a great metal project all the time. Most recently, meeting with Rick Vanderpool to come up with a strategy for two parcels that may be within our reach. We have participated in the Tuftonboro -- or Wolfboro-Tuftonboro Lea Bay. And jointly worked on projects together. We pay for Lea Lake monitoring for the processing of the samples. And several of our members are Lea Lake monitors, which is a considerable amount of volunteer time to do that. We have -- we also recruit new monitors whenever we can. As you know, we're been working hard to get the watershed, get a watershed plan done. And it's actually going to happen. Have I reported on that recently?
Not that I recall.
All right.
Last I knew, you were waiting for something from the EPA.
DES has received funding from EPA. They have approved our grant. And it's just has to go through the governor's council.
Okay. Is it on the agenda for a GNC meeting yet?
I don't know that. I know it will be going on an agenda. And the estimate is it usually takes about two months. So my guess would be more like November or December sometime when it actually gets on the agenda. But I don't know. I don't know what was working for that.
And how much is the grant for?
Grants for $65,000. The town put up a $15,000 match, which from previous experience should pay for the watershed plan.
And that's for the whole town?
Yes. And it's more likely our $15,000 would be spent last.
It's good news.
Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Could I ask that you contact our executive counselor on this matter?
Sure.
We understand that it's going to be coming to the council and it's obviously of great interest to the town of Tuftonboro. Anything he could do to move along?
On the agenda?
Well, I have no idea how long it takes to get him on the agenda or if a counselor can move forward.
Nudge.
Yeah, but the sooner they can start it, the better in terms of doing that.
That's really a great photo opportunity.
I think I remember being told that these get lumped together.
Yeah.
There are a lot of other grants that are received from other federal agencies and they kind of put it on one.
Well, my thought is it doesn't hurt to remind their counselor, to make their counselor aware that this is something that we're particularly interested in.
Our guess is we'd probably kick something off of any area. And the first thing is to establish a committee, which would also have representation from Multonboro and Wolfboro because they're a small section of both of those towns in that in the watershed. Remember, watershed boundaries aren't political. They work out real great for Tuftonboro, but they're not political. They're whatever the physical.
Geographical, right.
Yeah.
And then we have a structure for a support committee to your Conservation Commission in the Lang Pond Watershed Committee. And those people then have expressed an interest in being recruited, so.
And that's one of the things on the list. We've had several members on that, on that group. And we also, we look at at least three or four permits a month for DES being their eyes and ears. We don't, we generally don't provide any kind of a quality judgment or recommendation. What we do is we look at the permit and we see if it's accurate and if the, you know, all the things that they stated in the permit application is accurate for that piece of property.
Do you generally make a site visit on these things as well, not just look on the paper, right?
Yeah. And that's a lot of time for commissioners to put in, particularly if it's on an island. Typically, when we get them on an island in the winter, we don't actually make a site visit. But everything else, we always try to make a site visit.
So in the watershed plan, is it your expectation that's going to affect land usage? Or is this, what's its purpose, I guess?
The purpose is to look at the watershed, see how it functions. And then the big thing is, once you understand how it functions, look at any water quality problems that are currently present. And I'd like to use the Lake Road boat launch as an example. Water comes off of the highway, drains off of the highway and goes down into that parking area and then shoots into the lake. Very difficult problem to solve, but it's solvable. And it might take some cooperation from the state on the road or something. But it's, it's one of those things that's there. But because we go by it every day, we don't think about it. This plan will notice places like that and say, here's something you could do if you wanted to improve water quality in Lake Wintusaki or in Melvin River, you know, here's a project that would work.
My understanding is it can be sort of a roadmap going forward of areas to address.
The bigger thing it does is a buildup analysis. So it looks at what lands are, would currently be attractive for development. And then it says, this particular area could be a problem. So the planning board could be alerted to that. And if somebody ever applies for, or actually work a little differently, somebody applies for a development in, then the planning board could look at this build-out analysis and say, oh, that was flagged as a potential source of soil pollution or something like that. And then they could ask the developer, please take that into consideration and kind of build it in their drainage plan. With the idea that it's a lot easier to solve problems in a planning process than it is later after it's discovered. You know, everything's done.
It just seems that, I mean, the wetland permits part of the development is meaningless, really. Although, anyone who's ever done a subdivision has to go through that process. But the minute it goes into private hands, the minute a landowner or homeowner owns a piece, it's either they want it. And I don't see any, so I'm wondering whether this wetland or the watershed is going to have more muscle than the wetlands permit process because it, I mean, I look at right up next to my property.
It's not muscle, it's opportunity. If you feel that this is a problem, that it's worth solving, the fact that wetlands permit doesn't handle everything it needs to be handled, the town could adopt an ordinance or, you know, ask the people to adopt an ordinance that would protect situations like that. An example is Wolfboro, two years ago, adopted an ordinance for storm water management. I wouldn't recommend that ordinance myself. I think it's, you know, it requires, when you develop a certain number of feet, then you have to have this kind of a plan, you have to hire this kind of an engineer. I think that kind of regulation is burdensome. But there are other ways of writing a regulation like that to require some higher level of planning or some higher level of protection.
I just don't see DES as being affected. Obviously, they're not unfunded. And why that exercise is even there is beyond me. So whether or not having a watershed plan is going to change any of that dynamic, it would be interesting to see.
I prostrate to people every day that our economy in this area, and which includes Tuftonboro, is based on our lakes. And our, I mean, there's other conservation issues about, depending which rural lists and views and things like that. But our lakes are really our bread and butter. If it turns into a sewer, you know, water runs downhill. And everything that we dump on our lawns or comes out of our septic systems goes downhill with it. And it winds up in a lake and that's where it sits there. We have, in Lake Wintusaki, we're blessed with a lake that has a lot of a source of capability because it's so large and so deep. There are a lot of lakes in New Hampshire today that are suffering severe pollution problems. And everybody that lives around it, everybody that comes and recreates there is subject to that.
So are our neighboring towns doing the same watershed plans or are we the only one?
Yes. Right now, there are plans starting with Laconia and moving around the northern side of the lake. Multonboro just finishing their plan and they'll have a rollout of that plan sometime in December. And I'm planning on alerting everybody when that happens if we want to go over and.
Those communities have already invented the wheel.
And through the same granting process, and Lake Wentworth has done one through, using their own resources, and a grant. And Wolfboro would like to do one. There's very conflicts, and they've already got Wentworth done. In our case, we already have Muir Lake done, and that will be incorporated in our plan. This will not result in regulations, it won't result in any enforcement. It will result, it's opportunity for us to protect our economic base. If we want to, if we want to use it that way, it's only cost us $15,000 and a lot of volunteer time. If we don't want to use it, it'll collect us. If nothing else, it'll be a reference material. When something's going to happen in Tuftonboro, and people want to see whether it's going to affect water quality, that reference material will be there. It'll be relatively inexpensive to update it over the years because it'll be a good base to build on for the future. There'll always be a need to do a little updating. For example, Wolfboro's RIB, which is another thing that the Conservation Commission has been working on, you know, as that technology develops, it might change how we look at the 19-mile work portion of our water. Which was on my list, things that we do. We've worked with Parks and Rec on a number of things. We did an activity at home, hold home days. All of our members have attended one or another workshops on conservation issues. And we've also attended workshops on watershed protection. That's kind of all the things we've been, we've been working on. We have good attendance, RV, and everybody works hard when we have something that needs to be done. So I think it's a pretty good.
You recruited well, sir.
There's basically two items in our budget that are different. Someone's standard, one of his, our administrative assistant, and anticipates to, well, is the COLA, and there's a grade step increase involved. But there's also activity to complete the master plan. And we anticipate participating in two grant requests to finance more activity in the Great Metal and possibly some deed research. And then the other one is hiring Rick Vanderpool to write two pretty large grant requests for that, for that activity. Looking at experience of other towns with other projects and interviewing Rick, we're confident that, this is actually almost like a loan, that he can include the cost of doing any kind of this grant writing work into the grant itself.
Yeah.
So he would come back if the, if the grant was approved.
That's grant plus.
Yeah. It's what?
Grant plus.
Yeah.
Get back the fees and the cost of creating the grant.
So where are you including the work, what line are you including the work that you anticipate Rick doing?
That's in acquisitions and monitoring.
And you said this is relative to the Great Metal?
We still have about $2,000 in that category for that line item for this year. And Rick has to complete some work on some studies he was doing on rear plants to, that helps a lot in competing for the grant if you have great stuff. Also, he, we can score points for grant applications by getting adjacent landowners to participate in like a easement, a donated easement. He thinks there's some good prospects. He's been talking to some of these landowners for almost 15 years. I don't know whether you know, but the Conservation Commission, and I don't know a lot about this because I wasn't here then, but the Conservation Commission was very active in trying to get the Great Metal project going back around 2000. And then for some reason, the activity just kind of died out until three or four years ago. And Rick Vanderpool has kind of been involved with the landowners over that time period. He's very well respected in the state. And a landlord would love to have him come tell them what's on their land, you know, and what kind of things he finds. So he thinks he might be able to leverage a couple of opportunities there. So that, he'd be working on that until the end of the year. If there's anything he hasn't completed by the end of the year, we'll probably be asking to roll that money over into next year to complete it. The other one that I often get asked about is water monitoring, which is the Lea Lakes program. We generally get bills by UNH, right, almost the last week or so in the fiscal year. So that money doesn't get spent until the last minute, but that's probably one of the more accurate line items we have. We added a little money to the 19-mile brook category where we've always set a little something as a place marker. We'd kind of like to set up a monitoring station there, which would, which would mean a little higher bill from UNH for testing and acquisition of a little bit of equipment for a volunteer to find one. We're thinking, I think we have a pretty good location on the town land where the parking lot is at 19-mile bay, up in the back, with access to the 19-mile brook. It would be a good place to catch some water samples that aren't affected by the wetlands, aren't affected by any backwash from the lake. But it's also, this is what the water looks like before it enters the lake as far as any.
So that's going to increase the water testing line item that you have?
A little bit.
Okay.
Well, except we put it in the category of 19-mile brook, which is, the reason we want to do it is because of Wolfboro's rapid infiltration basin.
Right. Focuses the effort.
We made contact with the U.S. Geological Survey, which has done special water testing in New Hampshire and around the country regarding some of the new pollutants that are added to wastewater by personal care products, like medications.
Sanear motion.
Yeah. So, and these are things that are not within the state's required testing for municipal sewage. And basically, what happens on the RIB is they inject it up in the hill and it's supposed to go through a sand filter before it comes out in the watershed somewhere. As you know, from the lawsuit, their engineering firm didn't do a proper geological analysis to determine that indeed the water would come out on the hillside and go directly into 19-mile brook. And Wolfboro does a great job of pre-treating that sewage to take out a lot of the green pollutants, nitrates, phosphorus, so that they're, the water actually meets the standard before, before it actually goes into the sand filter, it meets the standard for injecting soil. It doesn't, there is no standard for dumping directly into the creek or into the stream. So that's, that's what their problem is that they're trying to solve. We've been, we've been involved in that all the way. Dave Ford, very cooperative, lets us know when they're doing something and puts on a little tour and we go up and look at it and we review some of the data. But this is a brand-new area of monitoring personal care products and medications or pharmaceuticals is the term they use. So is the possibility, actually, U.S. Geological Survey thinks that they can get a grant to do this. If they can, then Wolfboro would be required to put a match in, which I think is probably the more difficult thing to get approved. And I don't know whether that's going to wind up going, you know, that can all evolve for this year's budget or not. I know everybody's working on it.
So looking at your worksheet here, in the miscellaneous line, we have a negative expense for 2017.
It's the cash rebate.
Yeah, except cash rebates go into the general fund, they don't go back into the line. How do we end up with a negative in there, do you know?
We rarely spend that line. It's, it's the one we think of is, you know, if we need some flexibility somewhere, you never know what the opportunity is going to be for the coming year. You're going to have to guess.
All right.
We, I guess, we tend to overfund that one.
I understand that, but we have a negative expense in there in 2017, which says that we're, that we actually, that we didn't spend any money. We injected money there and that's what I wanted to see.
Oh, I see. Yeah. All right.
So the way these things are set up, there should not be a negative number anyplace.
Yeah.
Let's see if there's an accounting.
Yeah.
I don't think I was aware that's when we put this year's budget together. I don't recall discussing it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hmm?
I'm not saying. The miscellaneous line, all right, 330, 2017 expended negative $336.
Do you want me to ask that either?
Well, you probably ought to figure it out at some point.
When I put together the budget in August, I had, I had July figures to work with. And at that point, we had $500 budgeted and we had only spent $19.26.
Okay. And so now we've gone from spending 20 bucks to.
Yeah.
I think there was some money that was encumbered. There was a contract, some money was encumbered.
Yeah.
So that there was, what we budgeted 500, but there also was some money left over that was encumbered.
Well, I understand that, but you still, the way these things work, you don't end up with a negative number.
Right. I can't answer the question.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just raising that concern, but you think that 500 is, all right, let me just jump up to the postage line. You spent 100 bucks this year and you're looking to budget 500 again. And looking back over the last several years, some years you've spent money, I mean, two years ago, you spent over 600. But what, what is it that you use postage for and that would suggest that 500 is a good number to keep in there?
It's more than postage. It includes supplies.
Okay.
I believe. I think it's in one of those where it's got to be, they have some flexibility because we don't know.
You have to notify the abutters for the two properties potentially being purchased in the watershed. And there's some certification, certified mail fees there, right?
Yeah.
I know there was a couple of years ago with the other two that were purchased.
Printed notices for the wellwater testing, but I believe we filled that underwater wellwater
Because it was 2015, you sent out the notices to the two properties that we purchased. Now, the family was from Wolfboro. Well, you can research that and get back to us, right?
Yeah. What's, what's the total budget that you're looking for? Exclusive of the legal, because we're going to have legal in our budget.
You should have this in the folder. It's behind that one, behind the solid.
Really?
That's up 2,000 from last year. I have problems, two thousand five hundred for last year.
And that's all in monitoring. And just as a conversation, is there some reason why you lumped all the legal together a couple of years ago?
I'm thinking of the seventeen years I was on the budget committee, they kind of insisted that it all be under legal.
Well, I appreciate that you want all the legal bills under legal, but there's line items for conservation legal and that's breaking down.
The one thing that, since they expanded the town report is they did a program budget. So people could understand any of the costs connected with a particular department are listed there. So people didn't have to thumb through the town report to find out where mowing was or electricity or things like that.
One item I don't know how it's charged is I worked with Rick on the purchase agreement for the two properties we're currently negotiating for. I don't know. Anyway, I'm not told when bills come in.
You don't approve them before they get paid?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I know what line item is, but I have not seen that one, so I don't know whether
Whether it's yet.
It's been paid or not. Whether, you know, because he's the town attorney, whether somebody's gonna ask me about it or not.
The reason I wrote it up is we've got a budget, a legal page, which has legal, legal planning, legal ZVA, legal conservation. So we have the ability to break these things apart. I don't care why you decided not to do that. Because right now, ZVA's showing no, no cost on their line, but they had a lawsuit this year. And so what happens, it all gets one thing to select and I wrote up an enormous legal bill for whatever, not even a reason they want. And in reality,
The last time that you
How you made it?
Rick paid or we paid for it, but I don't remember.
Yeah. It didn't get, it didn't get put on the, on the legal consideration.
And he asked me, he asked me how, and I told him the bill of the conservation.
Right. I'm sure in our accounting it's said here, but it's not recorded.
I, I did talk to Diane like two months ago. It frustrates me, the categories we have, they don't necessarily fit what we're doing. And I thought it was us, you know, or...